I'd like to call to order the November 28th, 2023 meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Mary, will you do the roll, please?
Yep. Cool, here. Petway?
Here.
Maderas?
Here.
Granland?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stenvick?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We will start this evening with the swearing in of our newly elected board member. So, very exciting. Do we need the...
Microphone?
Mobile microphone?
It's here, it's here.
You want me to grab it? Stephanie's gonna grab it. Probably won't work it right.
Hello, you have to do the oath.
Okay, so I'm gonna read this section first, and then we'll have you do your oath, all right? It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as the Director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community in visions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together and with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Okay, so if you can repeat after me. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 13 to the best of my judgment and ability.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 13 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I think...
Oh, I get to do the walk!
Yeah!
Yeah!
Yay! I didn't think I'd get to do that. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Michelle, and welcome back to the board. Thank you. All right, next we have our agenda approval, adjustments, and announcements. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Laura, and a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica, any discussion? Hearing then will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next we have our announcements. On December 4th, there is no school. On December 12th, there is a School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement meeting here in the community room. On December 12th at 7:00 PM is a regular school board meeting in the community room. December 25th through January 2nd, there is no school. The district is closed to 25th, 26th, 1st, and 2nd. January 9th at 5:30 PM is a school board organizational meeting here in the community room, and January 9th at 7:00 PM is a regular school board meeting in the community room. Next we have communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board? Next we have our consent agenda. Our consent agenda includes our personnel report from November 28th, as well as the Treasury Report for September and October 2023. Taking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Julie, and a second?
Second.
Second by Mary, any discussion? Hearing then will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next we have our discussion reports and information items, starting with reports from members of the board, and tonight we will start with Jessica.
Oh, okay. Well, good evening, everyone. It seems like we just met with a holiday in there, but there have been a couple things going on. Most notably, that I'm preparing to serve as a delegate this weekend at the Minnesota School Board Association Delegate Assembly along with Director Palmer, so I'm very excited about that. I attended the pre-delegate assembly last week, or two weeks ago now, to prepare for that. And then, also at the last meeting, I was promoting pretty hard the Highland Turkey Bingo event, which ended up being a very successful event. We had really amazing turnout. I appreciate Director Petway came to play some bingo as well, and Highland was able to raise about $4,000 at that event, so that was really great. So thanks, everyone, for their support. And then additionally, I attended the work session last week with the other board members. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Mary?
Okay, so since we last met, I attended the CA Choir Concert, which was amazing. As Principal Burkus said that night, never thought that we would have a traffic jam for the amount of people coming in just to attend. There were about 200 students enrolled in that, and I think somewhere around 180 were actually able to make it and were onstage. So it was very packed, but it was really wonderful. I attended the work session, and then I've had a lot of contact with people, even though it was a kind of a short week with the holiday in there. So I've, you know, spoken with Member Maderas, Member Petway, Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenvick, conversations with other board members in other districts, talked with some, you know, staff, students, and families in the community, and also had an opportunity to sit down and have coffee with Representative Feist and talk about what her legislative priorities are gonna be going into the next year and what we see as a need here as well, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Laura?
I don't have a ton to report. I was at the work-study session last week, also attended a couple of chair meetings, and now I'm here spending the evening with you folks. That's it.
Thank you. Julie?
I also attended the work session last week, and I did review expenses for July and August, which I submitted my review questions to Superintendent Stenvick and Director Hennigan. So, that's pretty much it. Had a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Excellent, great, thank you. Michelle?
So, as Director Maderas said, I attended Turkey Bingo at Highland. It was a lot of fun. It was packed. There was a lot of people there. It was a great turnout. I also attended last week's work session. I have been doing some BIPOC Family Advisory Committee meeting planning. We have a meeting coming up this week, as well as North Park having its Family Engineering Night on Thursday as well. And I attended the Columbia Heights City Council meeting yesterday. That's all for me.
Excellent, thank you. Since our last meeting, I was able to tour Valley View with our Representative Kegel along with Superintendent Stenvick and Principal Pullman. Just really a great opportunity to have our elected officials in our schools and talking about all the things that are going really well and some of the challenges that we have as well. So that was a great opportunity. Thank you Superintendent Stenvick for setting that up. Also had the chair meeting last week prior to the work session and attended the work session, and just thankful for all of you and for the amazing food that we had. It was really fun to sit and have dinner and not be bored together, like aboard, not...
Good clarification.
Thank you, yes. So, thank you to Laura for your world-famous lasagna and the rest of everybody who brought something. I also had the chair meeting prior to this meeting. I had conversations with Member Granland, several conversations with Superintendent Stenvick, and I've had several conversations with community members and parents as well. Thank you. Superintendent Stenvick, do you have a report and correspondence for us today?
Chair Mueller, there's a lot going on, very busy, but I am opting to defer my report this evening.
Thank you. Next in our informational items, we have our secondary building vision cards. So, we have Executive Director Niemwee and Principals Burkus and Nguyen. If you guys wanna come on up.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvick. I am here tonight with our fine secondary principal, Principal Burkus and Principal Nguyen. And we are here to give you a report on the secondary building vision cards. Similar to the elementary building vision card, we've combined the secondary building vision cards, and we're excited to share the update on the fine work from last year. So our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. All our core values will be represented in tonight's presentation. And this is an informational update with no governance question. As we know, we are entering our last year of the strategic roadmap, but we're still excited to share the previous year's matrix. And with that said, I'm gonna pass it on to Principal Burkus to continue.
Thank you. Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenvick?
I'm not sure your mic is on.
Or you have to get really close, one of those. Or you can also just have...
Sorry.
That mic is always tricky.
I'll start again. Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenvick, and members of the board, and pleased to be here to talk about secondary in Columbia Heights with Principal Nguyen. We're gonna start tonight with just some brief demographics on our two schools, and I think I'll just point out from the start, as you see our slide and then the high school, that we are very similar in our demographics. And you can see, first of all, that there is that almost a third of our students who are EL, receiving EL services, the majority in Level 1, which is those who are just learning English. And so, our free reduced lunch rate at 83.9 and special ed at 15.8. At the high school, the EL services are at 33.8, so just slightly larger than ours, special ed at 13.4, and free reduced lunch just slightly behind ours at 80.9. But again, as in previous years, we are a very diverse school district, and we are a district with more and more EL students who are, we welcome to our schools. So just running through some of the key pieces here for the last school year. So the first one was the climate survey, reporting satisfaction with school climate. You can see that the high school did, had theirs come in about 81 to 90%, and us from 50 to 70. We have had another survey just recently where we were back up in our normal range, which is right around 90%. So, it was interesting for us, it was interesting though for us to discuss that and some adjustments, I think, that have paid off. Suspensions, again, CA at 14 to 20, and the high school at 10% or fewer. And then the in-school suspension, both of us at the 10% or fewer total number of students. It's not something either school uses very often. In addition, we do have, in the first one, the acknowledgement that we are a one-to-one school at the middle school and high school, so our LMSs are very important. At the middle school, that is Schoology dominantly, and at the high school, they also include a lot of Moodle and Google Classroom as well. The post-secondary academic portfolio for seniors, high school at 80 to 89%. And the utilization of Khan Academy was just an interesting note that was used a lot at one point in time. It isn't now, but it was named, so that is why those are there. But we are using a lot of online learning tools.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvick, Todd Nguyen, High School Principal, and once again proud to be here with my esteemed colleagues. Moving on in these slides, looking at our PSAT in 10th grade, we're looking at less than 40% of our kids took that test, which was on par from the year before. I continue to reflect that this is last year's stuff, not this year's. And so, if I get confused, Mr. Burkus said he'd put me back in check here. So, percentage of students in the district since 8th grade meeting college readiness is also the same. We do have, broke down for the next piece, the SAT, PSAT, MCA, ACT. You can see that the middle school and high school this year are combined between the 61 and 69% range as we combined ours. Total participation on 11th grade, we are at 70 to 79% for the SAT, PSAT. And then also the next area, advanced placement, we stayed the same as the year before, at 20 to 29% of our students are participating in advanced placement courses. And then when we look at the FAST, K-12, K-10 math and reading, we remain the same as the year before, 50 to 59%. Slide 11, students using Student View. This is our communication tool for our families and students. It's one of our communication tools. It remains the same at 90 to 95% of our students use Student View for both schools. Parents using that, we've increased that to 65 to 74% from the year before. And then our teachers using Synergy to communicate with our families and students were at our vision slide at the same as the year before. And then principal communications to families. Mr. Burkus laid out the challenge last year, so I still can't keep up with them, but we are in the vision, and I believe that we do a good job communicating to our families through multiple ways. Family engagement. The high school remained the same at the vision area for our academic achievement and community building through family engagement. And then CA moved up a square there to the four to five events. And then the last piece in that is number of parents returning mandatory forms. And for us, that means access to our one-to-one devices, and so that's a must. There are some other pieces on there that they have to sign off on, but we're above 90% in both schools. Improving outcomes. We remain the same for our grade-level departments using their common planning time. If they have the common planning time, they use that. If not, they find time to meet outside of their school day. We're both at 90%. And then the 95% of our teachers' daily usage on grade-level curriculum, that's what they're delivering in the classroom. And then our budgets, we are exactly the same as last year, or two years ago, I guess, with less than 3% variation from the budget.
So at Columbia Academy, we still talk a lot about providing worlds of opportunities to students. And so, here you do see some of our singers in our band. Both programs are doing a great job, but we offer a lot of different things for our students to do. So just talking then about some of our goals and for this next year. Literacy remains our main focus as far as a school, as part of our district. And so we are looking at the FALFAST literacy, and we're looking at it to say specifically, those students who are not proficient, so those who are at the lowest rung, will make aggressive growth at a rate that is at least 7% higher than the previous school year. So really looking to try to make big impact with those students who need to grow the most. And then by June 2024, the percentage of the students who are proficient, so there's growth, and then proficiency as measured by FAST literacy will be at least 5% higher in spring than fall. So the 2023 goal then, the percentage of students making typical or aggressive growth as measured by FAST literacy will be 50% or higher by the spring screening window. So again, the first two goals of proficiency, I'm sorry, of growth and proficiency are for this current school year. In math, similarly, we are looking at the students who are not proficient as measured by FALFAST math and hoping that we can hit aggressive growth with them at a rate that is at least 7% higher than the previous school year. And that by June 2024, percentage of students who are proficient as measured, and this is all of our students, by FAST math, will be at least 5% higher in spring than fall. All schools, including Columbia Academy, are engaged in PLCs on a weekly basis, and so by June 24th, the percentage of teams, our PLC teams, meeting or exceeding the use of CFAs will be 75% by the end of the 2023-24 school year. And that's measured by our district SIG.
Just to note, just to note, the CFAs are Common Formative Assessments?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, yes.
And the SIG is the School Improvement Goal Chart.
Yes, thank you. So literacy, again, is, these are talking about the strategies for those goals. And so for our literacy strategies, we basically talk about our gears, five different gears that have to all work together to get the engine to go. And so that includes the use of really pushing kids to read grade-level text, to work on fluency, to work on writing, discussion of text, and then the feedback that they can get from teachers to help them grow. So all of these things work together, and we are working with our teachers to make sure that they employ all of those strategies in every week that they are with their kids. So it's not like we'll do one part of this at one point and another at another point of the year. We use them throughout the school year. Math strategies, again, there is a lot of work at the number sense and basic math fact fluency, which sort of sets that foundation for kids, and that we can work then through intervention or extension with them on that and previous grade-level standards. But at grade-level standards, we are really focused on the direct instruction, that explicit instruction of I do, we do, you do, and the power that that has when kids are learning math or anything else for that matter. Finally, our professional development for teachers. So that is an important part of this, is to make sure our teachers are growing so that they can help our teachers grow. Thanks to Teaching and Learning for allowing our teachers to be part of the Science of Reading PD that's going on for elementary teachers. We are also engaged in Modern Classroom Project in many of our classrooms and hope to build more. And then of course, with all of our new EL students, we are working on English learner strategies as well with our teachers.
So at the high school, we have two pictures there, two of my favorite days, the first day and the last day. This is a tradition where kids come and chalk, our seniors chalk the sidewalk. And then the final day is throwing those hats up in the air, their caps. Two great celebrations. So for 23-24, our literacy goal at the high school is by June 2024, our high school will increase aggressive growth for 9th and 10th grade students by 15% as measured by the FAST compared to June of '23. We also have an MCA goal of increasing our proficiency by 5% as measured by the MCA compared to '23. Our math is similar. We do an MCA goal as well as a FAST goal. By June of 2024, at least 15% of the grade, nine students will make aggressive growth from fall to spring in math. And then, while it's not 9 and 10, this is the first year, it will be the first year we're doing 9th grade in math. We didn't, we just did literacy last year, so now we've added math. That's, if you don't see 10th grade, that's why. And then by June of 2024, the high school will increase the proficiency on the MCA math by 5% of proficiency compared to June of '23. PLC goal is that we will have high-functioning PLCs throughout our entire building with a focus on increasing student data through teacher effectiveness. And one of our strategies this year is we're doing a lot of work with our EL and looking at literacy, specifically vocabulary. Our strategies for 23-24, analyze data from FAST bridge to drive instruction, provide support for students, and focus on areas of growth. Our PLC study work surrounds language supports necessary for students identified as English language learners, also known as ELL, or you may hear ELA, with a major emphasis on academic language and vocabulary development. Continue to monitor and adjust instruction based on student need and the changing needs of the changing student population. Also, increased amount of vertical articulation with Columbia Academy in all content areas. Last year, we did some work around Spanish as well as our math, and we had great success with that. And we kind of set the tone, and we're gonna keep doing that with the articulation. And then last is intentionally within providing co-teaching model in core content areas for our Level 1 and Level 2 EL students, bless you, and students who have qualified for an individual education plan, also known as an IEP. And with that, answer any questions. Mr. Burkus will answer all of them.
Before we turn it over to questions, there was a slide that was missed. Can you look at the Section A1, Mental Health and Wellness? If you still have...
It's the very, very first one.
It's the first slide.
A1.
Yeah, we don't have page numbers.
Yes, it's eight.
Yep, got it.
Oh, not a full screen.
A1 is missing.
Yep. It's right under the demographics. You guys have that?
I don't think it's in their slide deck.
Okay.
Could I? I got a suggestion. I mean, it's hard with it not in front of them to maybe be able to go... I mean, it's hard with it not in front of them to maybe be able to go through that in its entirety, but I'd be interested as a board member, if we can't have, if we weren't able to note it tonight, if we could just know if there are any highlights or anything that you'd want to share about your buildings related to that particular metric.
And that's the mental health and wellness.
Mental health, no, it's the entire mental health and wellness component.
I was going to say I can just pass them.
Yes, Superintendent Stembek is going to do a review.
Okay, so for, so I'll just say the metrics, and then I ask that the principals chime in, if there's something to be elaborated on. So percent of licensed staff participating in health and wellness professional development. It looks like at Vision, are both schools at Vision or is one not? I believe that through the Teaching and Learning Professional Development schedule, all teachers participate in health and wellness professional development.
Right. And so this is usually done through the district and when it comes to professional development in this area. So it was, again, part of what both schools did. So yes, we continue to work with them, and we did last year with the Vision.
So we think there's an error on the typo.
I think it's Vision.
Yeah, it's, there's an extra one at the bottom there that shouldn't be there. Yep. So then I guess the second one was, can I just keep going then? Okay. Sorry about that. So the number of teacher absences from personal illness, and again, there was no reduction. It was the same last year as the year before. Attendance, number of students attendance days. And again, this is where we have seen some growth from 85 to 90% in '22 to 91% and higher in '23. The mental health screener, percentage of identified students offered service. And again, that is less than 60% of students. I think that this is an area, obviously, of need across the state with lots of mental health concerns that have come after COVID. And the number of PD sessions focused on trauma. And again, the district has provided us with a great PD in this area as an entire district. So there we have the four or more.
Thank you very much. Great work on that.
Yeah, excuse me for not having that there.
All right. Now, thank you for jumping right in on that. We appreciate it. We tried to throw a trick question there. I will now open up for questions. Board members have a question. Mary?
So I have a question about the high school, the goals for the high school. I know that as a, as a school board and as a district, we're talking a lot about how the MCAs are not a fantastic way to sort of measure particularly our students and their growth. So can you talk at all about why we're talking about FAST math and FAST bridge assessments, but also still relying on MCA metrics for our goals?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. One of the things that we've talked about in the high school is promoting a positive testing culture. And so we do recognize that there, for various reasons, we feel that it could be a biased test, and does it give us the results we want at real time? No. So the FAST bridge gives us the real-time results immediately, and it gives us where the students are, each student academically, and it gives us a jumping off point on where we can meet kids with different reading levels or different math levels, right? But also, we know that we have a group of kids that are going to go to the next level and take tests to go to college. And so I think that the testing endurance, things like that, how to take a test, how to eliminate choices, just the practice of testing, isn't always a bad thing for kids to actually do. And what we found a couple of years ago is kids were just leaving. And so it was, it was a culture of this option, and kids were just walking out, walking out. And then there's a responsibility of a school to keep kids safe as well and not get in the political of what, if kids should test or their choices are not. So we decided as a group that it would be a good opportunity for our kids to understand the testing process, to build capacity, to take a test that would be more like a state test or a college test. And so we found a little bit of value of that, and if you have more kids taking the test, we would expect better results from that. And the teachers also want to see measures of where there's gaps. The teachers are interested in what they could do better based on that test, because it does give us some reports on, on what we could do as a school or maybe some areas that we're missing. So we've tried to keep the politics out of it and really look at for students, can it be useful? And we believe it can be. We're not hedging on everything on that one test, though. Okay?
I mean, I think so professionally, and everybody at the board table has heard me have my, my professional concerns about MCAs. And I think, I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
And, and. Miss, can I add one more thing? My first year here, hearing the board talk about the value placed on this test was very refreshing, because we have a different set of impact that we deal with and have an opportunity with, too. And so I do appreciate that standpoint, too.
Well, thank you. And I do know that students, I believe, once they are in 11th grade, they get to opt out themselves, and it's not something that, I think, we don't walk around and hand those opt-outs and say, hey, kids, by the way, don't, you don't have to do this. But it is their choice at that age. Before that, it's not their choice, as much as the parent has to have a little bit more responsibility. If I am incorrect in my understanding of that, please feel free to correct me.
It's 18, I believe. And we're compliant with the state law with that. And you're correct, we don't advertise that, because we do want kids to do it for the right reason and understand if they are opting out, why.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Julie?
Thank you for that answer. One of the things that I was curious about is, is the fact that we are encouraging the kids to take the test, whether they feel like they're going to flunk it or not, right? Or do poorly on it or not. That's at the high school. What about the middle school? Are we, you know, we have eighth graders, I believe, taking the test? Is that correct?
Actually, everybody at CA takes it, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Seventh, sixth, seventh, okay.
Yeah, so the whole school does.
So are we doing, are we following kind of?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we do pretty much have everybody take it. There's a few kids that do opt out, but it's not a large number at the middle school. It's fairly small. So we give it as, you know, one of the tests to help us with measuring proficiency. So it's, it's not the only one, as Principal Nguyen was saying, but it is one that we know is public. We know that it is something that, again, for our students, in this, you know, it's a measure that we feel is important for us to look at as well. Big thing it doesn't measure, or at least doesn't measure well, and that is so important in a school like ours, where we have so many students that are just learning English and just becoming speakers of English, is growth. And so that's where FAST has really given us this tool to say, okay, you may not be jumping over that grade level bar yet, but are you heading towards it? And are you heading towards that slowly, or are you doing that aggressively? And so we've really tried to use that test to measure how fast are our kids moving towards that goal.
And then another question is related to that. So there is another test that English learners take, I understand? And it looked like the last couple of years, it's been about 100 students overall taking that other test. I'm trying to understand the test. Do you guys use that in any way? Or is the kids taking the MCA also taking the English learner test? I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, that is one more test. So yes, our students are largely taking both of those tests. The WIDA is the EL test, and so they must take that. That one measures, though, speaking and listening as well. So it does have a reading and writing component also, but it adds that oral language as well to the mix. So it does provide us with additional valuable information about students who sometimes might score very highly on the proficiency in terms of their spoken language, but not so high when it comes to writing, for example. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jessica?
Just before we move on from this particular topic, I know we've had a lot of discussion at the board table, this board and previous boards, about both the value and the limitations of MCA tests. And I just wanted to note, Principal Nguyen, you said something when you were answering Director Granland's question about the value of having more students take the test, and that by virtue of more students participating, you have better results and it increases proficiency. And I just wanted to, we've talked about that, the limitation of that at this table, but I think it's important to note the very real impact that that has in our buildings. When more, when students opt out of that test, that shows up as not proficient for the sake of the results for our district. And so having more students take the test, you know, is moving that proficiency standard along in addition to everything that our teachers are doing, that our administrations are doing to really increase literacy and math proficiency across the district. So, excuse me. I just didn't want that to get lost in the conversation, because I think that's really an important, an important piece. I did have a question about the demographics related to English Language Learners. I know we heard from the elementary principals about that particular demographic measure, and, you know, we're looking at last year's data, and so we don't have this year's data, but just hearing anecdotally from the principals that that EL percentage is, has increased. Is that similar in terms of a trend that you're seeing at, in terms of demographics and enrollment at CA and the high school? I think it said it was about a third, right, that it were English Language Learners? Is it about, are you seeing it about there, or are we seeing an increase again this year?
I think we're at 420, 420 was where I was at. 421, 423. And it changes daily. I mean, we have increased kids registering, right?
Yeah, ours has continued to grow, and it's, we keep waiting for the possibility that it'll slow down, and it really hasn't since the beginning of the school year. We just had three more tomorrow coming in. So, yeah, so it's, it is one of the big changes, I think, that we've seen over the last two years. And it does include, again, that change happening right now. It continues.
Right. And then on another topic, I'm always the broken record, I think, on this particular thing, so I apologize you have to hear it again, but we're going to be talking about strategic planning later in the conversation and using a consultant to help lead us through that process. And I think as we've seen the Vision Card reporting this year, it's be, it's really underscored the value in going back and having a new strategic plan, particularly around some of those metrics that the Khan Academy, as an example, things that aren't particularly relevant or provide us much value in terms of data anymore. And so we're looking forward to being able to have something that better measures the goals that we have now in 2023. And I think it just also emphasizes the importance of that process and making sure that we have broad community input from our school communities as well about what some of those metrics might be going forward. So just a comment there. And I did have one more question, and then I'll turn it over to someone else. And that was just related to the PLC work at both Columbia Academy and the high school. And I'm just wondering, several of us are new to the board this year, and I appreciate having some of those acronyms broken down for us. But I was just wondering if you each could speak a little bit more to your PLC goals for your particular buildings and just help us better understand what is the, the work that those PLCs are doing this year in advancing some of those goals.
Thank you for all those comments and question. So our professional learning community, PLC, right now, what, what I try to do as a high school principal is to align what we're doing with our professional development as well as the kiddos that we're serving, as well as what the PLC would look like. And so our ultimate goal is for a PLC is to focus on improving the craft of teaching, right? And so we know that if we can improve teaching, then that will increase students' knowledge and their, their gaining of the knowledge. So right now, we know that one of our biggest challenges in the classroom and one of the biggest changes for teachers is the volume of students that are identified as EL, right? And so we know right now that we need to pull out vocabulary words that just may seem common to everyone else, that may be confusing, or that we have to be explicit with them so they can learn vocabulary. So what a PLC would look like right now is if I'm teaching physics and I'm teaching all the Newton's laws of physics, there's a lot of high-level vocabulary words that it may just be used only in that one place and time, is in that classroom. And so we're real intentional about pulling those words out. So a PLC would look like this. Here's all the vocabulary words that we need to use in this lesson. Give kids a pre-assessment, say, what do our kids already know? What do they need to know? Or what do they already know? What do they need to know? What do they already know? And then the teachers talk about how are we going to teach this vocabulary? This is some hard stuff. It's physics. And to students that may not grasp language. And so our teachers are working really hard at coming up with all kinds of different ideas, whether that's visual cues, whether that is word walls, whether that's breaking down the actual words, whether that's modeling, showing videos of teaching that vocabulary specifically and explicitly. And then they'll give another assessment on vocabulary and say, all the teachers that have a common, you know, the common teaching of physics, look at it and say, who did better? And it's not a competition. And if you taught physics and I taught physics, and you're, 90% of your kids got it and only 40% of my kids did, I'd say, how did you do that? What did you do? And then I'm going to try to do exactly what you did the next time, because I want 90% of my kids to do that. Because I have to now go back and reteach my kids so that I can get 90% of my kids that understand the vocabulary. So it, it's great for kids, it's great for the craft of teaching, and then they put that in their toolbox of being a better teacher the next time they teach that lesson. And so it's to increase the tools and the knowledge and the, and the teaching, just the craft of teaching, art and craft of teaching, so they can do a better job the next time with kids. And ensure that kids are getting what they need to know. So does that explain what you're asking me or asking us?
Yes, thank you for that answer.
Okay, perfect. So I use science, so you can't use science.
I'm just going to add one element that Mr. Nguyen left out, not intentionally, but Mr. Nguyen was asking Teaching and Learning, what can we do as a school so that every teacher can participate in the PLC? So our EL coordinator, Sarah Baumann, then has provided professional development on how to use vocabulary, word, and strategies that teachers can then use in their PLCs to facilitate the learning of adults. And so it's really nice to see that adults are learning, and then they're able to apply in this conversation when they meet on their own after a professional development that was given.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Principal Nguyen and Director Nwembwe described it well. I would just add that we use the word CFA here, Common Formative Assessments. And really, I think that is where we try to pull that collaborative work in PLCs, so that teachers just don't go out and do their own thing, but they come back and they look at a common assessment in terms of they both gave it, or the three of them gave it, and then they're able to compare results and talk about how did they get what they did. So that, that collaboration, I think, is the key piece. And so we make time for that at Columbia Academy. Every Tuesday morning, we meet in PLCs, and then they have another time in the week that they meet during a prep time where they can come together as well. For us, we are also then combining literacy, our literacy goals, our literacy gears, and that conversation of what can we do to improve reading in our content area as we're all reading, teachers of literacy. So that becomes part of our PLCs as well.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation.
Other questions? Michelle?
I'm going to piggyback off of something. Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll do Michelle first. I'll do you. Yep, sorry.
No, it's all right. Thanks. I was just going to ask about, like, maybe those transitional grades, like from elementary to you, and then from you to you, Principal Nguyen. Like, is there any collaboration that goes on in those, you know, with the other principals say, at the elementary schools, you know? Are they going to help you guys get the data you need? And can you give them input on what they may need to do to prepare the children for the next? for the next level?
I think as a district, we're engaging in some learning walks where we've actually went over as high school and middle school into the elementaries to see what they're doing and have those conversations. On professional development days, we're looking at the articulation all the way K-12 at times and letting make, have an opportunity for teachers to have conversations. You know, I'd like to say that high school drives the bus and we tell everybody what they need to get kids prepared. But, you know, it goes both ways. Everywhere, all the way to like, are we making sure we're not replicating novel sets in eighth grade as well as then they're doing the same set of novels the following year. So, being real thoughtful. And I believe we have a real healthy relationship in this district with the administration amongst the building leaders. So, I really am feeling fortunate about that. As far as transition, how Dwayne and my staff work together, our administration sits down before the freshmen come in. And we talk about some of the great strengths that some kids have, some leadership opportunities that we may have, who they believe could be in some situations that could shine on, shine the light on some outstanding kids and give them some opportunities. Some kids that may be a little more, that may need some more supports. And so, we go individually about every single child. And it's, it's about a four-hour process when we do that. And then we also have our, you know, we had a hundred and seventy students show up for the freshman orientation as well. And so, those were eighth graders, incoming ninth graders that had an opportunity. And it's, in my three years, this year's been the greatest turnout. So, we were really, really encouraged that they promoted it and then we got the results of it. And the kids and the teachers benefited from it to be in the building, you know, before school started to have that transition. So, hopefully, I'm answering what you're, part of the question.
Yeah, I just, I was just asking, you know, if we're being collaborative in those efforts to grow. So, yeah, that's awesome. I love that you guys work well together.
Yeah, and it's great that we have fun with each other too. And we have good relationship too.
Yeah, I can tell.
Yeah. I had the opportunity to be an elementary principal last week too. So, you know, we see what goes on in a small district.
Just quickly, I just want to add, as a parent who has recently gone through both of those transitions from elementary to CA and from CA to the high school with our current leadership team, I have to say it is very much a labor of love. And I know that they do sit down. And it's not just that four-hour meeting. It's calls throughout the year checking in, you know, what are the ways that were successful? It's been my experience and what I've heard from families and students as well. So.
Actually, you asked a question that I was going to ask. So, that's great. But the last thing, you were talking about physics and the vocabulary. And you said if one teacher's at ninety percent and the other's at fifty or whatever, at what point do you find that out? Because you wouldn't want to find that out at the end of the year. So, how often are the teachers kind of assessing to ensure that the kids are, that are at ninety percent, that teacher is highlighted in the sense of, hey, what are you doing to make it, you know, your kids do so well? So, how often is that discussion had?
Well, I'll tell you, the discussion happens every single day for teachers. They're talking at lunch. They're talking in the hallways. They talk, they have a, you know, text chain. It depends on how tight the department is. But I feel like our departments are very tight. So, what you're specifically asking is how fast is a cycle, a PLC cycle? So, from the beginning, and you know, our teachers see kids every other day. So, ours is a little more extended. But it could be about a four to six week cycle. It depends. I mean, there's no magic number on how long. But at the end of the day, when we get the results, you can't just leave it there. If only thirty percent of the kids got it figured out, then we have to go back and reteach. And so, then the conversation is how are we going to do that within moving to the next? And how are we going to pull those kids in and assure that they understood it? Because some of the kids already did. So, it creates a challenge within the classroom. And so, they work that out. But I would say, on average, four to six weeks.
Well, and to piggyback on that, how often are the teachers meeting in their PLCs?
You know, we have a set limit. And each department does it different. You know, so we formally set it up. Mr. Burkus just said that he does every Tuesday. We have it on our calendar every Tuesday. One of the Tuesdays of the every other Tuesday is with me in the library or the media center in our administration so that we can all get that momentum going. But I'll just highlight like our math team, they meet every day at lunch. Every day at lunch, our math team is talking about results and how they would do it. If you walked in there, it's some high-level math conversations.
Sorry, so if they're like having those planned PLCs, let's say, weekly, if they've done, everybody's done Unit Seven in physics, they're all having that conversation that week that like, hey, Unit Seven didn't go well for my class, while Unit Seven went great for my class. And then, having those conversations. But they're kind of having that, am I wrong? They're having that conversation in those weekly meetings.
Not at all. And I mean, that's how schools work too. I mean, it wouldn't be uncommon for a second grade teacher to run in and go, how are you getting kids to know this right now? Like, my kids are lost. Or, they're doing great. Or, try this. That's just what teachers do. And it's just exciting to watch them, I don't want to say geek out because I don't want to offend. But it's, that's what they love, the craft of teaching. And especially in high school, the subject matter. So, daily and then formally weekly.
Thank you. And I have one other question. I hope anybody else has one. Can you guys, you know, and one of you can answer this question. But I'm curious, in looking at your goals, I think it was Columbia Academy, your goals were like a seven percent increase. And the high school, I'm looking at your literacy goals, fifteen percent is measured by the FAST. What does that percentage equate to? So, what does seven percent mean? Or what does fifteen percent mean? Is it number of students? Or is it that's the actual growth? And if it's the growth, what is reflected in that?
I believe in ours, it was the number of, percentage of students that are making aggressive growth is higher than previous years in that particular area of, or that, they're scoring in the lowest range. The percentage of students who made aggressive growth will be seventy, seven percent more than they were last time. So, it's not the, it's not necessarily talking about what their test score would be, other than it's going to be aggressive growth. So, we increase that number, that number of students. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, just to piggyback on this, because I know we've talked about it before, but I don't remember if it was at the table or if it was during one of the tour sessions. But when you say aggressive growth, can you define what you mean by aggressive?
Yeah. I think in terms of FAST, these things are all measured by them on a national scale so that those metrics are laid out for us. So, we're not figuring that out. They're telling us. But basically, what it's saying, I think, is that you are, you're starting, probably at least for our goal, you're starting well below grade level, well below grade level. And you are making, if you're making aggressive growth, you probably are making at least one grade level and more. So, it's more than one grade level of growth. And so, that would be aggressive. So, it's, and it could be multiple grade levels. So, it's, there's no, you know, maximum there. But it's, you're not just making sort of the normal growth that a student makes from year to year. You're making beyond that as measured on a national scale. I can't tell you exactly what that number is. And it sort of depends on where you start. All depends on where you start.
A child came in at, at a high school at sixth grade reading level.
But they were ninth graders?
Correct. And we stayed status quo, a typical growth, a year, a year, a year. A child's reading level by the time they got out of high school would only be four more years, so ten, right? So, we need to go a year and a half. That's aggressive growth to catch up. So, you could do that in elementary and high school. It's just, that's why they call it aggressive. And so, in elementary, you know, anything fifty percent or more is.
Yeah. As Todd was saying, the, your lines will run parallel if you just do normal growth. So, aggressive growth, those lines will eventually intersect.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We appreciate your time. And I know the extra time that we spend sometimes asking these questions, as Director Madera said, we're all focused on strategic plan, I think, at this point. And we're just really interested in hearing this information from all of you so that we can be better planning as we move forward. So, thank you for answering our questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep.
Next.
Everybody closed up and everything.
Making a break for it.
Yep. Yeah. Mr. Burkus can go. The rest of you all need to stay. Next, we have Director Tuckrell, Principal Winnie, and Ms. Bayless talking about new suspended and deleted courses.
Sorry, I'm talking to myself. Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm excited to be here tonight with Jacqueline Bayless. She's a high school ELA teacher. She's also working on her principal's license. So, one of her areas for the principal licensure in Minnesota is governance and the board. And so, she said, are there any experiences? And Principal Winnie and I said, yep, it's coming up. Principal Winnie and I are here with Jacqueline tonight to share an update, as well as a recommendation of new suspended and deleted courses for the 2425 school year. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And focusing in on our core values of excellence and courage as we think about the best ways to meet the needs of our students. And our Columbia Heights core values are aligned with the School Board of Education equity statement. It's interesting sharing one microphone. We're here tonight with an informational item. And you'll see some of us back on December 12th as we recommend approval of these new suspended and deleted courses. This evening, we do not have any recommendations for our elementary school. There will be some recommendations coming up later in the year as we wait for more updates on the READ Act. So, more to come on that one. And at this time, we do not have any additions or recommendations to add, delete, or suspend courses at Columbia Academy. But I did love this picture. Our students are amazing, right? Cultural Day there. So amazing. So, I'm here tonight with our high school team as we look at recommendations for new courses. And the way the process works in the high school or anywhere around the districts is it really starts with our students. We find out what their needs are. We look at the data that they provide through achievement, through surveys, through conversations. Then it goes through the teachers. The teachers work as a department to think about the recommendations the students are bringing and what their data is showing. And then they bring it to the administration. So, it goes to Principal Winnie. And he and I work together and work with other departments as well to look at the possibility of the courses. We also look at the Department of Education has a Minnesota Common Course Catalog that we need to follow as a school district. So, we look at the compliance pieces, the funding pieces, all of the pieces that go along with it. When courses are recommended and they, when they are approved by the school board, they may not run every year. It really depends on enrollment of our students, staffing, budgets, student needs and interest, that we may not run them every year. We also try in Columbia Heights to open up opportunities, which might mean that we run courses every other year, or rotate them so our students have more options. So, we continue working with our stakeholders to, oh, this is another one for us, that we're working currently to look at our grading practices. As this has been a conversation coming up from our students as well as families. Many of you as well, our parents, know that too, that our students taking different courses, how some school districts do weighted grades or look at different ways. So, we are currently in the process of working together and bringing stakeholders together to analyze our current grading practices and providing the potential of provided weighted grades. And we would bring that back as an update or a recommendation at a later time. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Jacqueline Bayless.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair President Mueller.
Yeah, no joke.
Superintendent Stenbik and board members. So, there are two CTE courses that we are currently running and would like to keep running. One would be an advanced coding course, which has been quite popular with a lot of our students who are interested in different STEM fields. So, with the advanced coding, they're introduced to the basics of computer science. They will do a lot with the Python coding language. And they just learn the basics of logic, algorithms, procedures, and then creating their own programs. So, this is something that we have a lot of students who are interested in the engineering field. And this is one class that they've really enjoyed so far this year. The second CTE course would be mobile design, which has been another really popular one, mainly because they get to create like their own relevant mobile app design by the end of the course. So, it's something that has been very hands-on. And if you turn on the news at all, you know that this is happening a lot with students all over the place. So, both of these courses have seen some really good enrollment. And they've also been greatly enjoyed by our students.
I'm pretty excited about the coding. All right. Our CTE course is Project Lead the Way, Computer Science. And so, using Python as a primary tool, students will learn the fundamentals of coding, data processing, data security, task automation, while learning to contribute to an inclusive, safe, and ethical computer culture. The course promotes computational thinking and coding fundamentals and introduces computational tools that foster creativity. Computer Science Principles help students develop programming expertise and explore the workings of the internet. Projects and problems include app development. So, we get to use our phones in this as well for our phone apps, visualization of data, cybersecurity and simulation. Project Lead the Way is recognized by the College Board as an endorsed provider of the curriculum and professional development for AP, Computer Science Principles, AP, and CSP.
As we look at the, oh, I lost it.
We keep moving it around. As we look at the new legislation from this past year, computer science is a big focus. So, it's exciting that we're getting ahead of it, as well as having staff that could teach this class. We also, we're fortunate to receive a couple grants to support this. So, if approved, we would be able to run a computer science course. And we have a grant through the Department of Education to promote STEM. And today, we received that we got an AP grant as well. So, yep, you didn't hear that one yet. Principal Winnie? So, if we're able to run this course, we have good funding behind it, which is exciting.
The CTE courses, Introduction to Education Pathway, this is a very exciting opportunity for our students. Our high school received, or public schools received two grants through the Minnesota Department of Education to support the Introduction to Education Pathway at Columbia Heights High School, Concurrent Enrollment Grant, and Grow Your Own Student Grant. Columbia Heights is currently working with Century College to add a third course and expand the current pathway. And that is Educational Technology Within Education. That's the course with, and maybe not the right title, but that's what that looks like. Introduction to Education, students will have the opportunity to be hired as paid tutors during the school year and during summer encore, as well as expansion of current family communication about the pathway and opportunities.
The ELA department would like, English Language Arts would like to take some time to explore some different opportunities for our 11th and 12th grade students based on student data that we're seeing, whether that be engagement in the classroom, choice offerings for what might prepare them best when they graduate high school. So, in collaboration with RCE, we're going to look at aligning our new standards between 11th and 12th grade to vertically align those. And then, in an effort to make some more equitable choices for our students, whether that be our English language learners or students who are a little more gifted and talented and advanced, trying to see if there's opportunities for us to include some additional courses that will meet the state standard requirements. It's still me. Just kidding. The musical genre exploration is a class that I'm really excited about. It's going to be a chance for our students to take a look at popular music, the music that they're listening to, and how that music is relevant to today. A chance for them to learn and use more academic conversations and languages to learn how music is relevant in the world around them. And this is also a class that would be accessible to like our Level Two EL students and above. So, as we're thinking about creating more equitable opportunities for all of our students, this would be a great addition.
In the world of science, AP Environmental Science is a course designed to be the equivalent of a one semester introductory college course in environmental science through which students engage with scientific principles, concepts, and methodologies. through which students engage with scientific principles, concepts, and methodologies required to understand their inner relationships within the natural world. The course requires that students identify and analyze natural and human-made environmental problems, evaluate the relative risks associated with these problems, and examine alternative solutions for resolving or preventing them. Environmental science is an interdisciplinary embracing topics from geology, biology, environmental studies, environmental science, chemistry, and geography. And then also in the world of science is science electives. Currently, one of our only science electives that we run right now is botany. And so we're trying to increase that. And just to be clear, this doesn't mean that we are going to run all these classes. We're asking for the permissions that if we have the opportunity and the FTE to do this, we could have, we could run this class. So the three classes, and I'm not going to read them all, it's astronomy, wildlife, and conservation biology, as well as forensics. And so these are really exciting to think about, just all that we have to offer. And then we could run this, even if we don't run botany, we could run botany every other year and add these in the opposite years or every third year. So it just increases the amount of opportunities our kids could have for exposure in the sciences. And we have an extremely talented and well-versed science department who, if you've ever had an opportunity to meet these guys, they're very, very intelligent individuals. And they're excited about this. Even if this adds a plan or prep to their workload, they believe in this work.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not so much a question, but just a comment or compliment, I guess. I think this is awesome. I'm excited about the programs. They all seem relevant and interesting for our students. I think that, I think they will love them. So I'm, yeah, I love the work that you guys are doing. I think that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
So when it comes to the electives, I remember when I was in high school, you had to have, and when I went off to college, you had to have one physical science, one biological science in high school to even get into college. Is that still the standard today? And so if we're adding forensics and astronomy, we're getting that, we're giving kids more options to pick from in those sciences. Is this for 10th through 12th kids? Or is this ninth through 12th? I'm trying to understand where this is for, you know?
For the electives, you know, we try to make them great, appropriate, and accessible. So these are, these are classes that you wouldn't need a prerequisite to be in. But if it, and I'm just going to say forensics, if this is a higher level type of, you know, if they're having to do some higher level stuff, it could be limited to 11th and 12th grade. These are coming from the science department. They've written these for us. They've had the conversations. It's what they agreed upon. They polled their students and this is what some of the students said they'd be interested in. And so this is just the jumping off point. And I could follow up with you once we get that ironed out and put in the course registration guide.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I make a comment to Julie on, and maybe we can include this in our packet, the graduation requirements?
Just going to talk about it.
I was going to say, if you see the graduation requirements, and I think as a parent of graduating seniors, I'm well-versed currently in the graduation requirements. You'll see kind of what, what they're required. And then there's a, like a, each student will take a certain number of electives. And so that's where some of this comes in, just more choices, I think, which is great.
Yeah, it's been a long time since I've been in high school. And my, my kids are grown, so it's, I-
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful if we have the graduation requirements.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
The state of Minnesota requires so many courses to fulfill the standards. And then the board policy dictates exactly what that looks like for our school district. So you are correct. They do have to still fulfill the science requirements by the state, but then they also have room for electives. Sometimes those electives can count towards some of the standards requirements, but most of the time, they don't in some areas. So it all depends on the department. But Principal Winn would work with his teachers to ensure that the students are still able to complete everything and take these electives. But it really allows them the opportunity to explore more before they go to high school and determine what they want to do.
You know, it also depends, there's the state requirement and then there's the college requirement. And so some colleges require three years, some require four. It goes the same way with math. It goes, you know, so there's just different requirements depending on the college that the child wants to access.
Laura?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I'm actually really excited about all these courses. Especially the pathway to education. I'm super excited about that. You know, being able to, to show this as being a viable career path, especially with our student population. You know, putting more of our students in the classrooms, I think, is going to be beneficial over the future. I mean, it's our future. Then the other, the other one that I'm actually fascinated with is all the new investment in doing more computer science. That was actually a discussion that I've, that I've had with other boards about generally the, the lower, in this particular state in particular, we don't invest as much in computer sciences as other states do. And that definitely puts our students at a disadvantage. So being able to give them the tools for real-world applications, I believe is, is, is going to be nothing but more successful. And I'm glad to see that we got funding for this because I know that has been the largest barrier for a lot of districts. So generally, the poorer the district, the less likely that those opportunities were going to be provided to students who would actually benefit the most from them. So I'm glad to see we're doing that as well. I look forward to seeing that whole course catalog and see what's going to happen there. Thank you.
I have a related question to what Laura said almost, and like not to be the downer of the meeting, but obviously, new courses come with cost in terms of curriculum, professional development, staffing. Have those, and I know you mentioned the grants specifically for the environmental science, I think, was, was one of them, computer science. How have we accounted for the cost of these new courses?
Yes, what we do when we work on staffing is really look at the needs and look at courses. So which is why we may not run every course. Oh, I lost something. Which is why we actually don't, we don't end up running all of these courses. We really ensure that we're able to follow through with the budget, with the staffing and all those pieces to support. We also keep looking for the grants. So our goal is not to add any extra cost, but to really adjust what we have to be able to support or look for outside support. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. In the beginning of the presentation, Principal Winn, you said that you're working with all the different stakeholders to try and figure out like what is going to, what are you going to offer? What are those, what's that going to look like? Can you talk about how long that process usually takes with teachers and administration and talking about what courses you may, or you may offer or may have to not offer?
I don't know if I have a great answer for this because everyone goes at different paces. So the science team has been having this conversation for quite a while, is what I was told. And so, you know, they know that there's a time when they should take this forward to the board because there's this time period. And so it's hitting that window. And so we missed that opportunity last year with this science team. They started developing, we were in this conversation last year at this time. And they just didn't feel like we had enough to take forward. And so it's getting everyone on board as far as the teachers have that common conversation too. And then I don't know the formal versus informal way that they're surveying kids. If it's in classrooms or if they're given surveys, you know, the high school's a very big system. And, and so when they bring it to me, I know that's my cue. The thing that I think that is a question that we could do a better job of as you, as you bring this to light is really having the conversation with our community, right? So we're doing a good job with internal stuff. And I do believe we could do, do a better job communicating that out to the parents to get their input as well. So my answer is it's, it depends. And in this situation, science had theirs going a little bit longer. Language arts, looking at those courses, that was by need of our students. And really looking at the grades and who's successful and who's not, and how we have access for kids. And if we're not doing it where our kids are succeeding, then what do we need to adjust within our system? Because our system is what gives us the results that we get. And so making an adjustment to the system is what we're looking at with that.
Thank you. I have two more things. The other pieces, and which you touched on, and Chair Mueller can attest to this because we were, we had this conversation with community members, families, who were coming into the high school and had questions because they were under the belief that their kids were going to be able to get into certain classes and were pretty devastated. Their kids were very, you know, sad that those things were not offered anymore. And so I think that just, you know, what you're talking about now in this moment is also really important to highlight. Like, how are we going to communicate these changes to families? And is it, I know that we have it written down. I'm positive we have it written down. As a high school parent, I'm sure we have it written down, but I don't remember reading it. So like, what are the ways that we can continue to, and this is probably more of a rhetorical question, but I just, you know, thinking about what are the ways that we can more engage families so that they understand what this process means and what it means when their kids sign up for certain things that maybe we have to shift or rotate to another year, for example.
When I got here, one of the things that we were doing was we were opening up this course description guide. And sky's the limit. Kids thought they had hundreds of choices. And then we look and say, oh, only two kids registered for this. And so we're not going to run that and 20 here. And so what we've tried to do is whittle down to make this a realistic approach for kids. What we offer in the course description guide coming up for next year is what we plan to run. We're not going to, we're just not at the, the ability, like big, big high schools that could, that have so much staff. We're pretty limited just because of the size. We have a lot of teachers that could teach a lot of different things, but we're limited on how many courses we can offer. There's a reality of that. And so I think to your point, us giving a realistic approach of what you can and can't take. And then there's also a reality of we're limited on our FTE. And so class sizes do get filled up quick. And so, you know, we hope that they can get as many, you know, multiple opportunities. If it's not this year, it could be next. And there is a reality that sometimes kids get put in some elective classes that they didn't want to be in. And so we have to have those conversations. So there's, that first two, three weeks in high school, there's a lot of switching around in classes. We do the best we can to, to meet the needs of the kids. But the reality is, is not every kid's going to get every class that they ask for.
For sure. Absolutely.
Can I just jump on that really quick? I think, you know, as Mary said, you know, she and I had fielded some conversations from parents specifically related to high school theater class. High school theater class that didn't, that didn't run. And I think, you know, as for people who are listening or watching, you know, some of the recommendations I gave is for the parents and for their kids to have conversations with you. That if there are kids who really want this class, that's not happening, to have that conversation with you because we need to have more than five kids who sign up for it in order for the class to go. But if you know that there's, you know, 30 kids who are interested in the class, then that's something that you can look at. So, yep.
And if, I mean, here's the reality, the teacher shortage too, right? So we, we, we had another vocational tech class open, zero applicants. How many kids would have taken that class? It would have been filled. But there was zero applicants. And so that's what made way for one of the computer science classes that we, that were hires that we made too. So there's, there's that hiring piece that really also can dictate, unfortunately, in a smaller school district, that it could just go away. The theater, you know, that was a resignation by a teacher and there wasn't applications for that position. So it was a dance, you know? So then you have to decide as a principal on what, what, what we need to do and who's out there in the field to hire.
Yeah, Mary, I'll let you finish then.
Oh, thank you. Yes. So Director Tuckrell. As you and I know, from particularly this summer, sometimes grants, well, grants don't always stay. And I'm incredibly excited to hear that we got this grant for this program. And, you know, I know it just came through. So maybe this weekend or this week, we could get an update as to what it is and possibly, because one thing I want to, I think that we should also be aware of is once grants run out, how do we continue them? And I know that this is a constant conversation, but just something I wanted to, to touch on. And then my last little point is, I'm going to make a plug for ParentView since it was on the report cards. As a parent of a child in the high school, you can actually look at where your child is at with the requirements. That's actually a spot in there. So for anybody who is at home wondering like what counts towards this and where their kid is at, I would really recommend checking out ParentView for that.
Thank you. Jessica?
Thank you. I really appreciate the questions that just came up in this discussion from Chair Mueller and from Director Granland. I know as a new board member last spring, when we are charged with approving some budget decisions, those have, you know, real impact on our, on our schools. And as part of that discussion, we know, you know, which programs or supports or positions in the district might need to be eliminated for budgetary reasons and for efficiencies. And those are always really difficult discussions, very difficult meetings. And one thing that occurred to me when we had that conversation last spring is exactly around some of what we're talking today. That while we are making decisions as a board in the spring, sometimes making cuts for this, the, to meet efficiency needs, to meet budgetary needs, that these conversations are also happening in the building outside of that, looking at student needs, student interest, FTE limitations, licensure limitations, all of these things. It's a very complicated conversation. So I appreciate Chair Mueller, you know, bringing up what costs are associated with new programs. And Director Granland talking about the communication to families and what that means. And so one thing that I talked to Superintendent Stenvik about was the possibility of the board getting information year to year about what, what, what is running and what is available to students. And I know Principal Winn, you talked about a goal for this year of having the course descriptions that are put out to families really truly representing what's being, what's running. And so I wonder if that's something that could be provided to the board in the future to let us also know. So just, just so we are aware of what the opportunities really are from year to year for our students to access, especially if some of us are having community conversations or hearing concerns from families so that we know that. And I'd say that's true for, that's something that would be really helpful from not just the high school, but also from Columbia Academy if there are changes that are, that are being made there. Because there are always changes being made, right? We, we, we are continuing to, to improve and meet the changing needs. So just a comment about that. I think that that would be really helpful to our future conversations. And then I think I'm a little bit confused, so I apologize for this. But I, I know this is an information item today. We're being asked to approve this at the next meeting. It sounds like some of the courses that are before us tonight are already being offered. And some of them are proposed new courses. And so I'm just wondering if you can provide some clarification about what, what we will be actually asked to approve at the December 12th meeting.
Yes, thank you. Great question. And some of them were updates in there too, right? What we're looking for approval for are those computer science courses. And we currently are piloting some of them with staffing changes that we were able to hire, which we talked about the staffing shortage earlier. We're able to hire some amazing teachers to support with that. So we're piloting some programs, but we'd like to put it in our course catalog and make it an option for our students. And so the computer science ones would be in there as well as our music class about the genre exploration, and then the science electives. So the other updates around the Intro to Education and the ELA will be updates that we'll come back on. But just wanted to update you on where we are in the process to support with alignment of standards and student needs.
Can I add some clarifying question along with that? Will the, the, the third education class be part of the approval as well?
Not at this point because we're in conversation with the Century College. So we're working with Superintendent Stenvik, working with other districts to see what opportunities there are. So we'll bring it forward once we have a decisive plan. But wanted to update you that we did get the grant and we're looking at expanding it.
Okay. Can, can we include in our packet just a list of the courses that we will be asked to approve on the 12th?
Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
To be clear, the education classes are concurrent with all the classes.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Jessica?
I did just have one more question, again, related to sort of what we're being asked to approve over time. Because at the beginning, Director Tuckrell, you mentioned that there, there might be some updates coming in the future from the elementary schools related to some of the REED Act funding. And I'm just wondering, will they, what, what does that look like? Is that going to be, I mean, are, are we going to consider again new suspended or deleted courses yet this year? Or is that a different conversation?
Yes. Great question. Elementary is a little different because they're not really- courses or more curriculum, but we will be bringing that forward. We sort of combine the two when we think about elementary, since we don't have separate courses. A student's in a class and they receive all the subjects. But the REED Act is providing us recommendations for resources that we need to align with at the state level, and that doesn't come out until January 1st. So we're awaiting that in terms of looking at supporting that. So there will be updates on the REED Act coming after January 1st.
Okay. So typically, when we've had this agenda item as a board, they've combined some of the elementary pieces into it when it's applicable, but because of timing, that's why we might see that again.
Yes. And we try to do it around this time, knowing that the high school needs to register students in January. So we're limited on timing with them being able to get their course catalog ready, and then with staffing, as a board supports with that. So we're limited on when we can do this, but the state has a different timeline in terms of the REED Act, so we're trying to work with that one too.
Thank you very much.
You covered what Superintendent Stenvik was about to say. So good work on that. Any other questions? Great conversation, great presentation, and thank you for being able to ask, answer all of our questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And Director Tuckrell, sticking around, being, yep, being joined by Executive Director Niemwey to talk about the World's Best Workforce Annual Report.
This time Principal Wayne can actually leave.
Yes, now Principal Wayne can actually leave.
The Bono Todd Tara Show, right?
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here tonight with Executive Director Niemwey, who's back again to support with sharing about our World's Best Workforce Annual Report, which is an item we bring each year according to Minnesota statute. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner all belong, all succeed, and focusing in our core values tonight on community, excellence, and innovation. And the Columbia Heights core values are aligned with the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education Equity Statement. We're here tonight with an informational presentation. We'll be seeking approval or recommending approval of our 2023 World's Best Workforce Annual Report. As mentioned earlier, it is in state statute, World's Best Workforce Annual Report. It's a requirement for school districts and school boards to publish a report each year based upon the goals given by the Department of Education. So our World's Best Workforce Annual Report is online. It is something that with COVID and changes, that they've allowed us to have that online. So we're able to support our community and get the information out there. And we include it with our Achievement and Integration, which Executive Director Niemwey will be sharing about in a minute as well. So World's Best Workforce currently has five goals, and we're reporting on last year. So similar to the earlier presentation, we're reporting on the 2022, 2023 goals. The goals are provided by the Department of Education. So goal number one, of all students ready for kindergarten. From there, our World's Best Workforce Committee said, okay, what is our SMART goal around that for this year? They tend to be very similar as we look at them, but we do have some changes as we look at what tools we're able to use. So our goal for all students ready for kindergarten, our students enrolled in pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 will show growth in all assessed areas as measured by TS Gold, which is the assessment tool they use in pre-K, given in the fall to spring. And we were able to meet that goal last school year using the strategies listed here. Goal number two from last year, all students in third grade achieving grade level literacy. We focused in on reading proficiency using our FastBridge from fall to spring. We did not meet that goal. We got close in some areas, but we have some work to do in that one, which we've really been focusing in on this school year. And the strategies we implemented last year are listed there as well. This is a goal that will be taken out with the new legislation. So the new legislation around the REED Act took, took out this one about the third grade achieving grade level literacy. So you'll see a change in that one next year. Goal number three is closing the achievement gap among all groups. And we tried to ensure we were using different tools for these different goals, so that we're not focusing only on the MCAs, but we have other tools in place. This one did use the MCAs, as we used FastBridge for the last one. And our focus was on decreasing the achievement gap between different ethnic groups by 5% from school year '22 to school year '23, as measured by the MCA reading in grades three through 10. Overall, we did not meet it, but we were able to meet it within certain groups. So we're analyzing those gains and the areas that we need to work on for this school year. And the strategies listed included professional development, surveys, affinity groups, and using different grants to provide resources. Goal number four, all students attaining career and college readiness before graduating from high school. Our goal was to increase our number of students taking college level courses by 5%. We also didn't meet that one yet, but we are on track to meeting that one. So as we increase our opportunities, we also are able to increase the number of students we're able to support with. And our last goal is a celebration for Columbia Heights, is all students graduating from high school with a high graduation rate above the state average. Our goal was to maintain or increase the graduation rate. Unfortunately, at this time, we do not have the official graduation rate from last year. That one usually does not get published until February. So even though the report is due right now or coming up, we won't know until February, the actual one. And the reason for that is we have students who are coming and going, are coming in at different times into our system. And so the Department of Education calculates it differently if a student comes in. And that changes quite often in terms of how they calculate it. So we join a webinar in February and learn how that calculation happened. But a celebration is that our graduation rate has been quite high. With the overall graduation rate for Minnesota at 83.6 in 2022, we were at 90.9. So we're definitely above that. So it's a celebration for us and the community on that one. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Executive Director Niemwey.
Thank you, Director Tuckrell. I have a slightly brief presentation tonight, but it's on the Achievement and Integration, which we spoke about last year when we were presenting our new plan. So this particular report is on last year and the last of three years of our Achievement and Integration. So our first goal is to increase the college and career readiness of Hispanic students from 27%, participating in early college classes to 36% in 2023, in order to match the overall high school demographic. The strategies involved in this are similar to some of what you heard, Dr. Tuckrell, Director Tuckrell. I've just upgraded her education level. Director Tuckrell presented on SOA, Advanced via Individual Determination, Access to Early College for Hispanic Students. And these classes are, you know, for ninth graders, it's a math support class. For 10th graders, it's an English support. And then for juniors, I believe it's, for seniors, it's a college workshop. And then for juniors, I think it's called College Prep. So those are the type of classes we're referring to. And then to provide effective family engagement opportunities, some of which you heard the two secondary principals present on. And then another component of that is developing youth leaders at Columbia Heights and Columbia Heights High School. I am pleased to report that the fine work that we've been doing in the district, we met this goal, and the percentage is 58%. The previous percentage was 42%. So literally, by our second year, we had already exceeded the goal that we set. And this should not be a surprise, but rather an intentional approach from teaching and learning in the high school to ensure that as we get more Hispanic students, we are encouraging them to participate in this college prep classes.
Can I just ask really quick on that? Because that's different than what we have in board book. So the one up there.
Yes. So thank you for that. It's a good clarification. So Anoka Ramsey used to teach some of the college classes, but we've been teaching those classes here. So when I first looked at the data, it was 23%. I think that's what you're looking at. And I thought, this can't be right, because last year it 42. How can we drop drastically? So yes, this is an update from what you have in the board book. We went back and looked at all those classes I just mentioned, and that's how we're able to increase that percentage from 23 to 58.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was just a big jump.
I had a mental note that I told Tuck, so mention that. So thank you for asking. Goal number two is to increase Columbia Heights Public School students' access to teacher-trained in culturally relevant and effective instruction. And the goal there was to go from 65% in 2019 to 80% in 2023. Our strategies for this around professional development is cultural-relevant professional development for staff and college and career readiness professional development for staff. I am, again, pleased to report that since the pandemic, we've been training and providing high-quality professional development for all our staff. So all our teachers participated, and we're seeing the evidence of that. Our third goal is a partnership goal, and we refer to it as an integration goal, is where Columbia Heights is partnering with St. Anthony New Brighton to provide summer seminar courses, a math course and a writing course during the summer for incoming ninth graders. And so the goal there is to increase the cultural awareness and competency of Columbia Heights Public School students from an average of two at the start of the 2020 school year to a four, using a Likert scale, at the end of 2020 to 2023 school year. So the strategies for that, as I mentioned, are two summer courses where students from both school districts are participating, where we hire the writing teachers and St. Anthony New Brighton hire the math teachers, but the courses are offered here in Columbia Heights, with students from both district representation are participating in that. So the result of that goal is that we do a survey from students, asking them about experience, learning outcome, and then, you know, in terms of integration, ability to connect with students who are from different group than their own. And so all students from St. Anthony, New Brighton, and Columbia Heights who participated in the summer writing and math seminar showed academic growth and a desire to continue taking this class. So as you may recall, in the plan that we presented, we're continuing with the summer seminar, the writing and the math, and we added two other components that we can talk about at another time. So as Director Tuckrell was sharing that the World Best Workforce Report is a public document that needs to be made available to the community, here are a few ways in which we communicate and share with the community. So it's included in the Community Connection, which is our, you know, community newspaper. It is also included in the Islander Connect that we develop internally. And then it's also included in Columbia Heights Update Newsletter that is sent out to parents, staff, and secondary students. And then it's also posted on our school district website.
We just want to say thank you to the collaboration with Communications. Director Stunkel and Emma do a wonderful job ensuring that this information gets out there in multiple ways, through links and different ways, so it can be translated as well.
Any questions? Julie?
Is there, what is the consequences when we don't meet a goal? Is there a positive response in, hey, we can help you? Or is there a slap on the hand, you got to fix this?
It's a great question. Your questions are all so great. Good, we actually talked about this in a previous presentation, about the Regional Center for Excellence. So the Minnesota Department of Education has an accountability way of measuring the North Star, where they look at student achievement, and then they also look at the district World's Best Workforce Goals. If we're not meeting, we meet with a Regional Center of Excellence Advocate. We have a wonderful relationship with our regional centers, where they're able to come in and look and see about all the things that we're doing and find ways to support us. And really, recently, it's been more about advocacy. They've supported us at the legislative level, talking about funding, supporting us with some of the needs that we have, and being able to support our goals in that way, giving us ideas, supporting us as leaders. So our Regional Center of Excellence supports us by coming in and having those conversations, looking at the goals we have, possible ideas that we could do with it. So it really isn't a slap, it's more of a support. Here are some ideas, have you tried it? Our advocates have been great from the Regional Center. They've commented about the amazing things that our school district community has been doing to support our students, and ways that they could support us through their networks as well.
Great question. Other questions?
Just a quick comment. I'm just glad to see, you know, you've got some wins in there and some really significant wins, seeing that, that participation by the Hispanic students, I mean, you doubled it. I mean, that's just, and that's what we want to see. Want to just keep seeing all that active engagement and success and looking forward to, yeah, the future.
Julie?
How does the math work? On goal number four, we have increased number of students taking college-level courses, right? And we're trying to increase that by 5%. And then we have the other goal, which is more multicultural, in increasing that by, I mean, it's, it was a little confusing to me because you've got more kids taking advanced classes, right? Whether they're of a different culture than, than whatever, I don't know what that means. But we're trying to give kids more culturally relevant mathematics or college, college credit, that's what it was. So college and college classes increased from 27% to 36% participation. And we were trying to get more 5%. So I'm a little confused by the two goals, because they're like, they're a little competing, it seems.
Yes. They're two different plans. So the World's Best Workforce Plan really looks at all students. So the way that we measure the early colleges is by looking at the number of students at the high school, seeing how many students are in college prep courses, which include early college, AP, PSEO, ones that are leading to college readiness, and looking at the whole student body. When it comes to Achievement and Integration, it's a little different in terms of their measures, when they really look at that cultural relevance piece, when they look at certain students or certain groups of students, where World's Best Workforce really opens that up. So they do have different measurement tools on that one. If you have anything to?
No, I think you answered it well.
Just real quick for clarification, I think for some of our new board members, there's, we're really looking, like you, Director Tuckrell, at two different things, and we've kind of combined them into one report. And if you remember, Executive Director Niemwey came and we went through the Achievement and Integration budget. So that's kind of related to a certain set of students that are served by, by that funding and then the reporting on that.
And I think we in school districts always laugh at what the Department of Education asks us to do sometimes, because the World Best Workforce encompass all the students. But because of the history of segregation in the country and in the state, there is separate funding that specifically focuses on how do you support all students, but by focusing on specifically different ethnic groups and see what level of support they're receiving, so that they're all achieving at higher levels. And that's why here our focus with an increase of Hispanic students in the district, we have selected that as a goal.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, you guys got it easy on that one. Thank you very much for your time tonight, both of you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Director Hennigens, talking about the Highland Roof Bid.
We've got a lot of slides here, so.
It's late, Ryan. Is that a?
It's almost 8:45. It's been a short meeting so far.
How dare you?
Give me a second to get this thing opened up. Too many things open up on this laptop now. Share my screen.
Building a lot of suspense over the roof bids.
All right, thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. And. Come on. There we go. Okay. So this evening, I have an information item to present on the Highland Elementary Roof Bid results. I presented to the board earlier on the request for action to go out for bid. So really, the slides are exactly the same, except for this, this evening, or actually, this afternoon at about 3:30, I received the bid award letter from the company that we were working with. So nothing like the last minute. we were working with, so nothing like the last minute. So our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and our core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, aligning with the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education Equity Statement. So this is, again, this is an informational item, and then this will come to the board on December twelfth for action. So this was the section of roof I showed last time. Section A at Highland was, it's the last identified roof section for immediate replacement that we have in the district through the roof facility study that we did back in 2019. And so these are the bid results. You can see that we had five bidders, two of which we had worked with, actually, three of which we've worked with before, two specifically on roofs Peterson Brothers, quite extensively worked with in the past, Burwell Roofing and Palmer West Construction, we worked with in other, other areas. And you can see that the low bid was McPhillips Brothers Roofing at $485,000, and this section of roof was bid out with Valley View last year. We did not accept this section because the two together were too expensive, Valley View and Highland. And this is actually a very good bid, considering that last year, it's, it's really less than $12,000 more than last year's. So very happy with that. And, you know, I'm not very optimistic. I think the wet insulation allowance is going to get chewed up, given the age of the roof. But, you know, if it didn't, that would actually subtract from our base bid and get us even closer to last year. And so really, actually, very happy with how this bid turned out. So the lowest responsible bidder, we work with Garland Company, and they're the one that helped us put the bid out and, and do the review of the bidders to ensure that our low bidder is our, is a responsible bidder. And so that, this will come to the board for action on December twelfth, where we'll be seeking approval for awarding the bid to McPhillips Brothers Roofing for the $485,000. And again, the timeline here, so this is a 2024 project, and estimated completion in August 2024, and this is being funded through long-term facility maintenance dollars. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hennigens?
So many slides.
None from you? Nope. No questions.
I mean, I think I would, we all have our particular areas of interest, which is why I think many of our eyes went right to you.
Yes, yes. As, as the facilities person professionally for the group, I, I will say I'm very pleased also with, with your bids that came in. So I'm glad you had so many come in and meeting our expectations budget-wise, so it's great to get that done. Right? All right, we'll see you back at our next meeting.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thanks, Director Hennigens. All right, next we have our policy first reading. Available policies are 503 student attendance, 505 distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees, 510 school activities, 522 Title IX, 526 hazing prohibition, and 531 pledge of allegiance. These are available on our website for review and for comment. Anybody have any questions on those policy or that item? Great, thank you very much. Next, we will move on to our action items. First up is our school board goals. We are looking to approve our goals for 2023, 2024. I'd like to thank Director Maderas, who eloquently put all of our thoughts into words, creating our goals. The goals that we are looking to approve today, goal number one, as the current strategic roadmap sunsets in 2024, the board values input from a multitude of diverse perspectives on the direction of Columbia Heights Public Schools. The board will develop an inclusive strategic planning process that incorporates equity-minded and measurable goals into a new strategic plan for Columbia Heights Public Schools. Goal number two, the board will continue to advance visibility and two-way communication with our community and will place particular emphasis on connecting with multilingual families. The board will engage in intentional outreach to provide ongoing communication to newcomer families and families of multilingual learners. And goal three, the board aims to grow in learning and discussion of topics that impact student success. The board will identify opportunities for relevant and timely board member development that align with the professional development of district staff. I get a motion to approve the board goals for 2023, 2024.
So move.
Michelle, and a second.
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Michelle.
I just want to say thank you, Jessica. I think you well-articulated all of our thoughts in, into this, and it's just exactly what we were all thinking. I think we've all said that to you a couple of times now, but I just want to make sure that we say it publicly, thank you.
Thanks.
Laura.
I'd also kind of like to echo too, thank you also for doing this, it saves us from multiple meetings of word sniffing. Okay, because when we all got together, I've been through a number of these, of these discussions, and we can get, we can keep going back and forth. This is very eloquent and exactly what we discussed. Thank you.
Jessica.
Well, I'd note that one reason it was, it was manageable to articulate this was because of the robust discussion that we had at the work session. So I, I do want folks who might be watching and didn't attend the work session to know that these goals didn't appear out of like a vacuum, right? Like, this is the result of much conversation, not just at the work session about, about our goals, but also in thinking about what we wanted to prioritize as a board, based on all of the conversations we've had around the board table on different topics over the years. So I hope that we can move these towards approval, and I'm excited that we can address even a couple of these as we talk about strategic planning later in the agenda. So, thank you.
And I would just like to comment, I'm really excited for these goals. I really feel like the robust conversation that we did have, that we are all on board, and I think in reviewing these at our last work session, I think every one of us was excited for them, which means that we're all committed to them. So I want to thank you all for that, too. I think these are good goals for us. Any other discussion? All right, here and then, we'll proceed to vote for the approval of our goals. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And the board goals pass. Motion carries. Next, we have our strategic plan. As we've been talking about and alluding to this evening, we have a decision to make tonight regarding which consultant we are choosing for our strategic plan guidance and process. We received three proposals and had three presentations at our work session from three, I think, great companies, all of which we have a partnership with in one way or another or have worked with in the past. Our proposal came from Partner Ed, CISO, and Wilder Research. So three great proposals, I think. We had some discussion at our work session. Right now, tonight, as this is an action item, we would need a motion to approve one of those as our consultant for the strategic plan process, and then we would have discussion after we have a motion in a second. So is there anybody who wish to give a motion to approve one in particular company for our strategic plan consultant? Michelle?
Probably going to say it wrong. I want to make a motion to approve CISO as our strategic planning consultant.
You did just great.
Thank you.
Right, so a motion by Michelle to approve CISO as our strategic plan consultant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? I, I'll say, go ahead, you go first.
I was just going to say that I, I really do think that they are great companies. Overall, for me, I, I believe that CISO kind of met in the middle where the other companies were, and we did have a longer discussion about this, but I believe that, you know, we need to have our head and hearts in the same place, and I kind of feel like we met in the middle where the others were kind of one on each side, and I feel like this was what we needed, and I love what we can get out of having them on our team. So, yeah, I, I like them a lot.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, you know, we, what I was looking for is a company that could come in and that could have the community conversations and kind of bring the discussion and the engagement part of our strategic planning process, as well as a commitment to data and bringing that data piece in as well. And I agree with Michelle, I think we found a company that, that provides that balance. I appreciate all of the companies who came in. I think we had really great conversation about that, that there's, you know, definitely have benefits to each and every one of them. And I appreciate a sensitivity to cost and kind of a re, you know, somebody, one of the companies coming in and providing us, you know, a den, addendum amendment to their proposal that was something more in line with what our budget was. CISO also, their proposal is within the budget that was set for this project as well. Mary.
I was just gonna, to piggyback on that, I want to also say a big thank you to Superintendent Stenvik, who worked really hard to solicit those bids and did a lot of vetting with that, and also communicating about that addendum, making sure that we all got that information, per usual, but also just really the hard work that you did coming up on the holiday weekend to make sure that we had all of the information we needed for this decision tonight. So thank you very much for that, too.
Any other discussion? Jessica.
I'd share that thanks to Superintendent Stenvik, and I think it's a, how thoughtful all three proposals were is a testament to your communication with them ahead of time, making sure that we got proposals that were within scope, that were in alignment with our priorities as a district and as a board. So thank you for that. For me, I, I'm supportive of the CISO proposal. I think community engagement, particularly thinking about how we can engage different groups of stakeholders in maybe new ways, is something that is important to me. I know that that's part of one of the goals that we just approved. And so one thing that I really appreciate about what, what the, CISO's proposal specifically is being able to do multiple rounds of feedback with our community and with our stakeholder groups, and I, that in combination, as, as you said, Chair Mueller, with the data, I think is going to get us to a place where we have a finished strategic plan that really listens to all voices and that we can all really stand behind and have ownership for as we move forward into the next era of Columbia Heights Public Schools. So, thank you.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Well, thank you all for your time, and Superintendent Stenvik as well. This is an important decision. As we continue to talk about the strategic plan, it's important to have the right partner. So thanks for all the time that everybody put into this. With no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of selecting CISO for our consultant for the strategic plan process, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to board topics. I do have one, I'm going to start off with one, normally I let you guys go first, I'm going to start off with one board topic, and I'm going to ask Superintendent Stenvik to join in with, we had previously talked or discussed a potentially, or communicated having a special called work session regarding the audit, but we are going to have to not have that. Do you want to jump in, Superintendent Stenvik?
Yes, thank you. The auditing firm was unable to confirm the ability to be, to present at a special called work session. With this new auditing firm, we're just finding that they have a very different process in terms of the, the end goal and the presenting and whatnot. So the, the auditor, our new auditing firm will be here on December twelfth and present the audit then, and we will be in compliance with everything that we need to be in compliance with, with the state in terms of submitting the audit tape, which has already been done to the state, and then the board accepting the, the, the audit, which for this particular auditing firm, it typically happens in January. So it's just a change of timeline for us. So we'll just have to get used to a little bit of change. We are very excited about this new auditing firm. They're asking very different, different questions. The information regarding the audit will be provided as soon as possible before the December twelfth. This is our first go-around with this auditing firm, so it's just, it's just different. So we had proposed a possible special called work session coming up, and that's not going to happen.
Yeah, and I, I will just chime in to that it is really important for, I think, myself as chair and Superintendent Stenvik, and I know Julie and I have talked about this, especially with three new board members at a time where we are really financially needing to make sure that everything, all the boxes are checked, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. It's important for us to make sure that the auditing firm has the time that they need to prepare the reports and the presentation. It's also important to me that we have time as a board to have that audit presented to us and then have time for questions and discussion before doing approval. So I am not comfortable having both the information and the approval at the December twelfth meeting. We do only have one meeting in December, and so they will come on the twelfth to do an informational item, update information. That will give us, you know, individual board members time to review the audit information that we receive, ask any questions, and then we will then accept the audit in January. So hopefully that timeline works for everybody. Superintendent Stenvik?
I'll just add, this information is hot off the presses from this afternoon, and so I am, Stephanie and I are working on doing due diligence and communicating with MSBA and just kind of checking, double-checking with other districts and whatnot. So, but again, it's just happened this afternoon. We got the information, so.
Yeah. Mary.
And we had used the previous auditing firm for a number of years, correct?
Twenty years.
Yeah. So this is a big, it's a big change when you go to somebody new, and, and I think it's, you know, as always, we're going to be really transparent about it, and I'm looking forward to it, and thank you very much for the thoughtfulness about not wanting to rush it.
Thank you. So stay tuned. More audit information on the twelfth. Any other board topics? Michelle?
Well, first, I want to make a correction, because I think I said that Family Engineering Night was next, this Thursday. It's actually on Wednesday. So I wanted to make sure I put that out there. It's from five to six-thirty at North Park. I also wanted to acknowledge that we're having a resource fair on Thursday. Oh, am I saying it wrong? Okay. And that's from five to eight, right, in the family center, here in the family center. And I also, since we're all here, wanted to just update my schedule, so I, I cut up double books for that evening, and we have a BIPOC family advisory committee meeting. So I'll be probably bouncing in and out of, so I'll probably be here for the first hour and the last hour and go over there for a little bit.
Yep, I will, I'm, I have on my calendar to be here. I can't be here right at five, but shortly thereafter, so I will try to get here.
Well, I'll head up the beginning.
Right, yeah, so if you're here at five, I'll be here before you have to go, and then I can stay throughout the evening.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
I will also try to be here that night.
Perfect. Yeah, we got it.
But that, that was all.
Excellent. Any other board topics? Mary.
Just another shout-out to Robotics. They have another robotics meet this Friday, and again, still looking for people, anybody who's interested, please feel free to reach out. You know, it's a great team, and it's wonderful to see them growing so much over the years, and I think, especially now that we're having a lot more high school students come down to it, having that synergy sort of between the middle school and the high school is pretty great. So come on out and support those kids.
Jessica.
I just wanted to note that Highland is having a fundraiser at Noodles &amp; Company a week from tomorrow on December sixth, and so if you get dinner at Noodles anytime between four and eight o'clock, a portion of the proceeds go to the PTO over at Highland. Thanks.
Excellent. And I will note that the High School Musical, which is not the High School Musical, it is actually a musical that the high school is doing, which is Cinderella, is, I believe starts, opens on December seventh. So it runs through that weekend, so definitely, these students work so hard on putting together a great show, so please go and see Cinderella at the Performing Arts Center in the high school, starting December seventh.
And, and I really want to, I really want to echo, I mean, they always do such an amazing job over there. It is a really, really good time.
It is a really, really good time. I mean, they are in, very engaging, and they're very dedicated, and the programs are just, are just wonderful. I mean, it's really, take the cha, get a ticket and go see it, I, every, whenever they're showing, it should be, it usually is a pretty good, pretty full house.
Yeah. Mary.
I forgot, I'm so glad you said that, because also, CA, their musical was announced, and they're going to be doing some auditions. It's SpongeBob the Musical, so I'm like, really interested to see how that's going to be. But yeah, it's really great when we can see, again, those, those arts and things promoted between the schools, so I'm super excited.
Any dates on SpongeBob? I'm a fan.
Yes. All right. Any other board topics? Well, thank you all for a great meeting tonight. We will adjourn at nine eleven.